Yes, Chair LaFara.
Present.
Vice Chair Finnerty.
Present.
Secretary is here. Board Member Catalinato.
Present.
Board Member Neely.
Present.
Board Member Fulham.
Present.
And Board Member Wutzow is absent, so we have a core of them out here.
Great, thank you. Can you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its stand on nature, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Just a little housekeeping. We don't have a very full house, but in case of emergency, just exit the rear doors, go down the stairs and out the front door. And when you give testimony, please just give us your name and affiliation on the application. So we have Tuckahoe Orchard. Do you have proper notice, Council?
We do, Madam Chair.
We do, okay. So, Tuckahoe, Kate, you want to read that into the record?
Please take notice that in accordance with local law number 417 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, October 13th, 2022, at 6:00 PM at Town Hall, 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via videoconferencing to consider the site plan application entitled 720 Butter Lane. That's what I'm going in?
Yes.
The applicant has requested a phase review.
Is that it? Are you reading 720?
Yeah, Tuckahoe Orchard.
Oh, we're going out of order. Okay.
Tuckahoe Orchard?
I don't see that one. I see, that's Craig, but I'll do it.
Well, that's me.
Please take notice that in accordance with local law number 417 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, October 13th, 2022, at 6:00 PM at Town Hall, 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via videoconferencing to consider the pre-application entitled Tuckahoe Orchard LLC. The application is for a two-lot planned residential development cluster plan with 25% open space of a 2.786 acre vacant property situated in the R40 zoning district and New York State agriculturally sensitive area located at 268 North McGee Street, Tuckahoe, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-129-2-11.2.
Thank you. Wayne?
Good evening, Board Members. Wayne Bruin, O'Shea Mosensing and Bruin, on behalf of Tuckahoe Orchard LLC. Principal Jose Molina is here with us tonight. As the notes indicate, we're here for a pre-application for a two-lot subdivision. The plans, the alternative plans, the standard yield map and a cluster map are over here on my right, the number one on your agenda. As noticed, it's properties located on the easterly side of North McGee Street, approximately 2,500 feet north of Sabonic Road in the hamlet of Tuckahoe. Property has 2.786 acres and we're in the R40 zoning district. We're not in any particular overlay district. The westerly portion of the site is, has been cleared and the easterly portion is wooded. There are significant steep slopes. What I'd like you to do is maybe, this might help, you do have the aerial photograph that was up on that, but I'm going to submit an aerial photograph from 1984. And you can see, this comes off the town BIS. You can see this property was disturbed many years back. And if you go back and you'll see the 76 aerials. And I think it involved sand mining operations that extended over two adjacent properties. And if I may, essentially, so this portion is currently clear, but back then it was clear pretty much almost to a point of 200 feet into the top of what would be this slope. You can see this significant steep slope here. And I believe that's a result of the mining that took place maybe 50 years ago. It has been revegetating that area, but those slopes still exist. So through time, this property before my client, there was an operation here that had somewhat of a commercial operation. My client has been using it more or less for nursery stock. Excuse me, nursery stock. You can see some planting still there. Immediately to our south is a very narrow lot that was owned by John Di Stefano, a house built in about 2001-ish. And you can see it has a long driveway. It extends all the way to the rear of the property. The property immediately to our east is owned by the town of Southampton. That was dedicated open space, community preservation fund, open space. And we have two maps, the standard yield map, two lots, and then we have a cluster for the R40 zone, not in any act of protection overlay, the minimum open space requirement is 25%. So we located open space on the rear portion of the lot, primarily the portion that it remains wooded. And just for development purposes, there is public water available along the B Street. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
How far, does the village still have a pistol range in that area?
Yes. Yes. So if you, you know, you have to go to the broader picture, but they have property that the village owns.
Maybe zoom out a little bit?
Yeah, let me just actually take this one thing off here. What are you looking for, Wayne?
So you see the, sort of just to the right of your cursor, or to the east is development which is part of the village, is Southampton facility, including a pistol range.
That's the pistol range here?
Yeah. And that's all in the Tuckahoe Woods.
Yeah.
Open space areas, all, you know, I was actually in the town attorney's office when the town purchased the Doniano's property, which is where your cursor is for open space purposes.
And Wayne, the house to the south, that isn't actually encroaching, is it? That's just the way that.
According to our survey, they have a planter that's encroaching on our property. And we're going to be reaching out to them to have that removed.
I mean, just looking at the aerial, it looks.
If you look at the GIS, the property lines aren't accurate.
Okay.
But if you look at our survey, you can see it's, they're literally on the property line, the planter associated with their deck is about a foot onto our property.
Any other questions from the board? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application? Seeing none.
Zoom.
Is there anyone on Zoom?
No one on Zoom.
Then we'll close with a 10-day written comment period. Motion by Dennis, second by Craig, all in favor.
Aye.
Proposed extension, six in favor, one absent.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're moving on to the Long Island Resource Corp., or Tesla.
That'll be Dennis. Do you want to?
Yeah, I have it on mine. Okay.
Do we have notice, submission notice?
We do, Madam Chair.
We do.
Okay. Please take notice that in accordance with local law number 417, 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, October 13th, 2022, at 6:00 PM, Town Hall, 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via videoconferencing to consider the pre-submission conference entitled Long Island Resource Corp., Tesla. The proposed site plan, special exception applications for a motor vehicle dealer used in an existing 19,242 square foot building located on a 2.9 acre property situated in the highway business zone district at 54 Montauk Highway and Watermill, Tax Map number
Good evening. My name is John Bennett, Bennett, 212 Winter Lane, Southampton. Lisa Poirier from Twin Forks is here this evening. This is a public hearing, which is primarily for the purposes of having any public input. Lisa's going to give just a quick sketch of what's going on here. Should somebody be saying to me, "Don't touch the button"?
What is that?
I don't know. It's like it says.
Don't touch it, John.
Of course, everybody touches.
Don't fool around.
Sit here next to the.
See what happens if you touch it.
Nope.
Good evening. Lisa Poirier with Twin Forks permits on behalf of the applicant. The property is located in a highway business zone and Anthony has the aerial up. You have highway business zone on the properties across the street to the north, as well as to the immediately adjacent property to the west. The properties to the east and south are zoned CR60. The current tenant there is Colette's Furniture. The prior tenants were Pier One, which was there for many years. Prior to that, it was Flying Point nightclub. Long, long ago, it was a bowling alley. So the planning board last saw this application as a full site plan back in 2001, which was when Pier One took over the entire building and the nightclub was terminated. Current application is a pre-submission site plan application for a special exemption for a motor dealership. The proposed tenant is Tesla, which will be going in there. The existing building will be renovated along with the interior and the exterior. There will be no changes to the footprint. It will remain at the 19,242 square feet. Some additional garage doors will be added for access for service. The vast majority of the building, about 80% of it, will be dedicated towards service of the Teslas. A small portion will be towards a showroom area and a log lounge/office area for the staff. Thanks to the foresight from the planning board on other applications on the corner of Flying Point and Montauk Highway, they, you guys had requested the cross-access easements along the rear and as part of the other application development that is actually constructed. And so it's in place, which will help alleviate any potential traffic issues for vehicles coming to the site. They can pull in immediately off of Montauk Highway with the right-hand turn and those service vehicles or the tractor trailers that may come in with the cars can easily exit with that service entrance, I'm sorry, the rear cross-access easement and go right onto Flying Point Road, hit the traffic light and go westbound back onto, I guess County Road 39 at that point. So it's going to be the second Tesla dealership in Suffolk County. There's another one which is in Smithtown, which is about 45 miles away. And then there's one other one on Long Island, which is in Syosset. So they're looking to establish a dealership on the east end where there's many clients. And we're just here for the public input.
Lisa, any charging stations here?
There will be charging stations for the dealership in the rear of the building.
Will they be open to the public or just?
No.
No?
Just for clients?
Just for clients.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions on the board?
Well, one of the challenges of these auto, these dealerships on the highway, as you know, is that vehicles tend to migrate out to the 50-yard, 50-foot transitional front yard. So hopefully your clients are aware of that.
The model of a Tesla dealership is that they'll have a couple cars on site for you to look at, but you can't actually order a car from the dealership. You need to do that from a computer somewhere else.
That's their model, unique. Any other questions?
I do, Madam Chair.
Yes, Gloria.
On that I heard that a majority of the space is going to be used for service. And I don't understand what kind of service would be provided and whether there are any environmental concerns.
It's when cars come in, they need regular maintenance, if, just with, you know, changing the tires, testing of the batteries. All of the batteries will be stored in appropriate containers. There will only be a few batteries on site at a given time. Most of them don't need to be replaced. If they do, then they can order them in. It's, you know, just standard maintenance on any vehicle associated with.
Electric vehicle.
Moving up a tire, you know, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, we had.
I just, I don't understand what, you know, do you have to change the oil, for example?
It's not a combustible vehicle, so it won't have any oil to change.
Yeah, I don't know.
There's a detailed analysis that we can prepare and submit with the full site plan application.
And I think, again, maybe at the full application time, we had asked about storage of batteries.
Right. We can provide that at that time.
We brought that back, we brought that back to the client, I don't know what to tell.
Okay.
It's fully electric, Gloria, Gloria. It's a fully electric vehicle.
I realize that, and I don't, I honestly don't know what that means.
No gasoline storage?
Batteries.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm just saying, we should look at the environmental potential for what will be done there.
Any other questions? Anyone from the audience want to speak to this application? Seeing none, anyone on Zoom?
No one on Zoom.
No one on Zoom, okay. It's a 30-day written comment period because it's a pre-submission conference. So we'll close with a 30-day written comment period.
Motion.
Motion by Dennis.
Second.
Second by Kate, all in favor.
Aye.
Proposed extension, six in favor, one absent. Thank you. Thank you. The next one? The next is 720 Butter Lane.
Some butter?
We have noticed?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair.
Which one's butter?
We have noticed.
We actually, oh, we got all mixed up here.
Oh, I can do that one again.
This one?
If you like.
We have some elevations. Good evening, everybody. Good to see you.
Hi, Carl. We just have to read this into the record?
Oh, sorry.
Please take notice that in accordance with local law number 417 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, October 13th, 2022, at 6:00 PM at Town Hall, 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via videoconferencing to consider the site plan application entitled 720 Butter Lane. The application, the applicant has requested a phase review where proposed Phase 1 includes the conversion of the existing office trailer to hemp processing, legalization of the existing refrigerated produce storage building slash trailer, and proposes the removal of one existing trailer to the south of the existing farm stand with eight proposed employee parking spaces to the north of the farm stand. And Phase 2 includes, Phase 2 includes proposals for PV panels on the southern portion of the existing metal barn, a 900 square foot concrete apron with an overhang, a 120 square foot concrete equipment pad, area for SCDHS approval, Suffolk County, what's that? Department of Health's approval sanitary system, thank you. Proposes the removal of three existing trailers to the west of the existing farm stand with five proposed employee parking spaces to the south of the farm stand, with both phases showing eight parking spaces dedicated to the existing farm stand located at 720 Butter Lane, Bridge Hampton, town of Southampton, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-50-1-8.6.
Thank you. It's yours, Carl.
Good evening. That was the board, Madam Chair. Good to see you all. Carl Benacasa for the applicant. We were here several months ago, back in July, considering Phase 1. And as you recall, Phase 1 of the plan required involved legalizing an existing office trailer for use in hemp processing and removing an existing trailer. Those, I'm happy to report, thanks to the quick action of this board. My client, Jose Motteño, required license sure from the state. I'll wait for you to have a.
Yeah.
So Phase 1 is completed. Thanks to your agreeing to waive the public hearing and your quick action, he's duly licensed for that operation by the state. So he's operating under that temporary trailer which you approved. And if you recall, Phase 2 was to create a more permanent structure and operation for hemp processing. Do you have elevations in front of you now? Is there?
Yes.
Second page, and there should be a floor plan there.
Yeah?
Yeah, we got it.
So the site plan is pretty straightforward. Now we move to the point where the operations for hemp processing will come out of that temporary trailer that we approved in July, that you approved in July, and go into this metal-sided barn, that larger structure. That is existing, yes. Removing and accompanying with that will be the removing, a removal of three trailers, you can see noted in red on the site plan. And in addition to that, we are formalizing today the parking for the operations, the farm stand and employees, as well as a location for proposed sanitary noted towards the lower right-hand corner of the site plan.
Can you point out what trailers are being removed, Carl?
Certainly. So this trailer was removed. This is Phase 1.
I see, yeah, very finely dotted, yeah.
This is Phase 1. There's a trailer here that was removed, is not there. And this is Phase 2, and these three trailers here, which are storage containers in Phase 1, will also be removed. And they're going to be removed because the existing barn is going to serve that purpose.
So that means we're left with the greenhouse, an official office trailer, and the building.
The office trailer will ultimate, that's what's existing now as the hemp processing unit. That will be folded into the barn in Phase 2. So that is, the reason we did this as a two-phase approach was to, so he could continue his operations with the use of that office trailer as a temporary processing structure.
Okay, but that will go away?
That will go away, yes. And the hemp processing goes into the barn. What? Yeah, sure.
Ben Chalif, Chalif and Rogers, just to clarify, the, that hemp processing use will go away from the office trailer, but he would very much like to retain it for 20C food processing use, which is licensed by the state. So since it's, that's actually, it's one of its former uses, so it would convert back to that and would likely get moved, but we're still figuring that part out. But it's well back from the road as it is now. And then the farm stand, which is towards the front in between the two areas of parking, would also, is there and would stay there.
Thank you, Ben. Sorry, I misunderstood. Yes, the use would be moved.
Okay. Can you talk about these, are they solar panels that are proposed?
Yeah, Ben, do you want to talk about the PV panel?
Photo.
Photovoltaic panels, yes. So we're still, for his electricity consumption, we're still working out with the supplier exactly what the array would be, but I've indicated it here sort of schematically on the south roof as basically maximized on the south roof. It's on the second page of the documents I gave you. As to the number of kilowatts exactly, we don't really know yet, but it's shown basically maximized. There would also be a very small concrete equipment pad somewhere probably on the south side of the building, just for air conditioning condensers, that sort of thing. And then we will have to be making application to the health department for a low nitrogen sanitary system for the, well, a low nitrogen sanitary system for the small bathroom that will be in this existing barn, that will be added to this existing barn. But then there will also be, I believe, a process water holding tank that the health department will require too, but we don't quite know what health department needs as far as that goes. I think that's everything other than, right. And then on the east side, we're proposing a new roofed porch, if you will, basically just a concrete slab with an open roof in the same material, matching material to provide cover at the doorways and some, some area for loading, unloading, that sort of thing at the door. We're reducing, removing the existing large double sliding door that's now at the front of the building and changing that to something that's indicated there on the east as some sort of glass, roughly, because it's seven-foot doors, to let a little bit of natural light into this entry slash office area. And we're removing the double sliding doors on the northern part of the east elevation and changing that to a rolling overhead door. And then I'm sure that, well, we'll come back to you or submit revision when we actually have the photovoltaic plan a little more decided. We're also proposing to remove the existing utility pole that's towards the southeast corner of the property and change that to underground service. And I think that's highlights.
What is the unlabeled room on the upper, on the floor plan, the upper left?
That's all part of the same.
Equipment, storage, maintenance.
Yes, equipment and storage and, and maintenance equipment.
Now we know.
Now you know. Thank you, Ben.
Question answered.
Anthony, do we have specific code for photovoltaic for solar?
Solar panels?
On a commercial structure? I thought we, something got mentioned in the agenda.
I believe they're working on their solar legislation, solar, right? So I have to go back on, because I know we've met with Michael Angelio.
We've mentioned it, yeah.
I think that's all the conjunctions with batteries though, no?
Right. Yeah, I was gonna, I would think you would end up putting in one or two.
Battery storage?
Battery storage units.
I would imagine, because I think he'll have more capacity than, than he would be able to sell back or that he would, he can be using at any one time. So, yeah, I think, I think a battery's.
And for rainy days, you need the storage.
Exactly.
Or hurricanes, yeah.
Tesla, man.
And nights.
Tesla makes.
And then the hemp cannabis, oh, sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, Gloria.
Gloria.
Is there going to be any food processing at the site? I kind of thought they were actually selling some things that were made there from the farm stand.
Right, they, they were in the past. That, that was what we were talking about, the existing office trailer that he now has permission to use for hemp processing. When that use returns to the barn, then he would like to convert the use of that office trailer back to state-approved 20C food processing.
Okay, because I thought I just, I heard you just talk about a bathroom, but it'll include the food processing as well?
Oh, the sanitary system?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, with the health department, I think will, will have to tell us whether we're going to need a grease trap and a separate system there. It, it somewhat depends on his use.
So that, that needs to be included in the site plan?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I, I thought I'd covered it in that it's included in that dotted area all the way to the south.
Unfortunately, I'm not at Town Hall, so I'm not seeing digital showing.
Okay, well, I can, anyway, yes, I, I sort of generically described an area that would be for all Suffolk County Department of Health Services approved sanitary systems. But with.
Right next to the parking, right?
Correct.
And the trailer.
Are you going to be required to do ADA parking for the farm stand up front?
Not that I could see in the code. The, I, the section of the code that I quoted there, it just says that there need to be five cars minimum provided. There's no, it's gravel right now and there's, but no, I don't think the code actually requires that.
Because it's going to be operating on the temporary farm stand permit, right?
The farm stand will be, yes. That's what that parking is for, right?
No, that's true. We haven't done any farm stand site plans I can think of.
Yeah, I'm writing down the ADA parking question because I, that's a good question.
We'll check it.
I mean, we could, we have room, we could certainly.
Yeah, it's required, yeah.
With a five-foot aisle next to it.
But you might not have to.
But the gravel, I'm not sure how that would work.
You might have to do a hard surface on the one.
Right.
Well, will any of this be used year-round? I, I don't know how hemp reduction is handled, because I just heard Dennis say it's a temporary farm stand.
No, that.
The farm stand part, yes, that, that's seasonal. The, but yes, there will, there will be more year-round use of, of the barn as, as there is now, but, but in a different use for hemp, hemp processing, year-round in the barn.
Is the food processing trailer hooked into a septic system currently or is it pumped out because it's a temporary?
Well, it's not being used for food processing now.
When it was.
When it was?
When it will be.
There was a drywall, it was, it was. There was a drywall, it was, it was, uh, it, um, yeah, no, it, it didn't have a proper system.
Okay, so that'd be a consideration, yeah. It'd be great if everything fit in, that's why I was asking about this section here, if everything could fit in the same building, ideally, but, you know, it's a consideration.
It's, it's a consideration.
And then can you, um, share the, the hemp processing, um, equipment? Is it a dehydration freeze dryer?
Can I, uh, share with you what the equipment is? Well, we could let the experts speak about that. Would you like?
David Falkowski, Overmind Organics. Uh, the hemp processing, um, there's many different processes they're using. Uh, we use our greenhouses to, to dry things. As far as turning hemp and cannabis into usable products, it could be just simple packaging. Um, there could be tincturing, the way many herbal tinctures are done. We could, uh, infuse them into oils. Um, there's actually solventless processes where you actually just press the product and the resins come out, and those can be packaged or further turned into gummies, edibles, oils. Uh, just notable that the raw flour itself, uh, akin to dairy milk, just can't be released to the open market. The purpose for licensure, GMP, CGMP audits, inspections, uh, to ensure food safety. Uh, just to address quickly, the, uh, the food use, the 20C licensure. Unfortunately, the way the state has set this up, uh, traditional food processing cannot occur in the same licensed premises as hemp and cannabis processing, you know, because, uh, because of track and trace protocols and all of these other things.
Dairy, yeah.
You, you can't have it in the same space.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm open to flexibility on placing, uh, 20C food processing in the property as logistically necessary and obviously opening it up to appropriate things. We just want to make sure we're not encumbered with a quarter million, half million dollar build-out for a kitchen that is absolutely necessary and customary to majority of, uh, farmers in the northeast here specifically. We've definitely experienced post-COVID, a severe decline in fresh produce sales. Uh, matter of fact, uh, many of the insulting statements sent our way is, why don't you make more zucchini bread? And I simply said, because I'm a farmer and I grow more than one zucchini plant. Again, I just want to reiterate, I would not ask for, for any of these permitted uses to be permitted if I didn't need to. My life is complicated enough.
Thank you.
So this was, the one referral made was to the fire marshal, and I believe you have his response. I think you can see, his one response was that access for fire safety vehicles and fire suppression vehicles wouldn't be precluded. If anything, we're removing structures that were precluded, those two electric poles are being moved, so that's not a concern. And then he asked for the specific use of, in hemp processing, uh, the, uh, operations and the utilities used. He would need further information to determine whether or not setbacks or specific requirements related to fire protection and, and safety code are required. To be honest, the state is still sort of rolling those out on this. As you know, this, this industry's in its infancy. So we are closely monitoring that and of course will comply with whatever they require and whatever the fire marshal requires.
Okay.
Um, you have the floor plan in front of you, I just wanted to point that, um, from an aesthetic perspective, a lot of this farm equipment that is going to be stored here is now stored outside, so that'll be internal, internal storage. Certainly benefits both the equipment and the state.
Great. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the, uh, audience?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Thomas Addison. I live at 636 Butter Lane, which is directly to the south of the property in question. I just want to paint a picture of the character of the neighborhood that now exists. I think maybe 30 years ago is primarily farmland, but today it's farmland with a lot of houses bordering it, uh, to the north, south, across the street with a cul-de-sac.
Yes, Lauren.
Lauren. Through there. Uh, there's a school across the street. So anything that this, the farm does is going to have a profound effect on, uh, a residential area. Uh, houses with families and children and a school, so I'd like you to keep that in mind as you analyze the proposal. Another issue I want to bring up is the timing of the notice. I only received it less than two weeks ago, maybe October 4th or 5th by certified mail. Only, I think, because I'm a year, one of the few year-round residents who lives here, Butter Lane in Bridgehampton does not get postal service delivered to their houses. You have to have a post office box at the post office. A lot of the houses, I believe, on the street are second residences. People don't live there full-time. They may not have a local address. If mail is delivered to the house, it's immediately returned because there's no post office. So a lot of people haven't even been informed of this, and it's a big project. And, uh, I think it's only fair that you delay whatever decision you make tonight until all the affected neighbors have a chance to contact their attorneys and really analyze what's going on here. I don't know much about hemp processing, but I can tell you one byproduct of it is a very noxious skunk-like odor that has permeated into my yard, my neighbor's yard, and the neighbor to him to the south. On some days, it's so strong, you think somebody on there is smoking a reefer the size of a telephone pole. You can also smell it sometimes on Scuttle Hole Road, which is almost a mile north of the property. Now, this is, that's a fact, that's a byproduct of it. And removing the production from a small trailer to a warehouse that's over 5,000 square feet, you have to ask the question, what is going to happen? Will there be more equipment, uh, machinery? Uh, will the smells and the odors get even worse, so that more of the neighborhood is affected? Um, we just need, the neighborhood needs a lot more time to analyze the proposal and ask pertinent questions that is, you know, only fair to ask how it affects our quality of life. Now, Dave has been a good neighbor, I grant that, and I'm sure he means, means well. And I'm, I'm just hoping that we can all reach an equitable solution so that everybody's happy. I'm certainly not denying his right to farm within the law, confines of the law. He does that. But I just think we all need a lot more information before any serious, uh, resolution and decision can be made.
Council, is there any, um, ability to send notices digitally for people in? Well, I know, I live in Bridgehampton and there is no mail delivery. You have to go to the post office.
I have, I mean, I have affidavits of mailing, I don't have them with me now. Patty has them, but they, every, all the notices were properly done pursuant to the code. I mean, could they?
Right.
Go beyond that if they wanted to?
I'm just asking the question.
There's no requirement.
Yeah, they're ma, the thing is that the, the notices are mailed, and so if you're going to your post office.
They're going to be returned. No, they're based off the tax rule.
Oh, well, I, I don't know.
All the houses have P.O. boxes.
I just know a lot of people didn't get them.
Didn't get it.
Neighbors I've talked to, I had to email them the notices. And within the timeframe of October 4th, they hardly gave me enough time to come to town hall, look at the plans. Um, I've talked to other neighbors who said they didn't have time to contact their attorneys. They didn't have time really to engage my attorney, so a lot more time is needed on, needed on this. And, you know, I feel we can reach an equitable solution for all parties involved. We just need to know what's happening.
Sure.
You know, from a trailer to 5,000 square feet with a concrete equipment pad and solar panels, this is, this sounds like a big operation. So I don't know, you know, it's not just the trailer. It's, you know, going to be more of a, actually more of a manufacturing facility. And doesn't that bring up the issue of manufacturing versus agricultural? And it's, isn't that a zoning issue? Questions that I'm asking, that's all.
Yeah.
Well, to be clear, the purpose of a public hearing is to hear.
Okay.
Not to decide, and there'll be, how long of a public comment period for writing? Jackie?
What's an agricultural construction period? Thirty, we can make it thirty days. Probably thirty days a month. Okay, so all your points are well taken. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Steve Corcoran? Do you want it? No? He, he said what you were going to say. Okay, good.
I'm just pointing out that he's, um, he's my property manager. He's hearing impaired, but he can smell.
He smells that skunk stuff, right?
Yeah.
Um, Michael? Michael? Yes?
Yeah.
And your last name is Mitchell?
Muchkin.
Muchkin, okay. Got it. Oh, that's a K. Okay.
Uh, hi, just want to say a couple of things. I'm from Pennsylvania, came out here about 20 years ago. I think this is an exciting, really dynamic area. The reason, one of the reasons it is we've got small businesses, you're not going to see anywhere on the planet. You just won't. As far as kids, uh, it's great that the kids around here grew up to see real farms, because they're going west. People wanted to live, not in the cities. They wanted to move to the country. They wanted to move to the farmland. Now they've encroached on the farmland or shared the farmland for residential purposes. So that's what they did, and it's allowed. You've allowed it, everybody's allowed it. Now there's going to be problems between agricultural use and residential use. It's going to happen all, it's happening all over the place. So, A, this farm smells ten, it's an organic farm. It smells 10 times better than any farm I've ever been on. There's no cattle. The buildings are going to get, less buildings. Now, the buildings you're talking about, this giant facility is already there.
Address the board, please.
I'm sorry. The, the buildings are already there. There are going to be less of those structures, temporary and other ones. There'll be less of those as time goes on, as you improve this process. So it gets better and better. The nature of farming is that there are sights, smells, sounds, tractors. But in this farm, there's no pesticide. There's no nothing. It's clean. So this isn't like an atomic power plant or something like that. This is a really clean, really thought-out thing. These guys are doing a good job. I do a lot of contracting all over the east coast, and these guys are doing a really good job.
Can I ask you where you live?
Yeah, I live in Sag Harbor.
So you're not next to.
Sorry, sir, sir. There's no, there's not a back and forth. We can't do that. They can't pick it up on the microphone and it's not.
I'm sorry.
Okay, no, he lives in Sag Harbor. That's the address.
Sag Harbor, yes.
So you support farmer, farmers, farming, yeah?
Yeah, I came out here for the same reason. There, 20 years ago, there were somewhat, it was a little different area. I thought I wanted to get, I, I did some farming when I was a kid, and I lived in a city in Pennsylvania, Rustville. And so I grew up in factories, and of course I always dreamed about going back to the farm. And I thought, you know, 20 years ago, I had a chance to do some contracting, some renovation out here. I did a couple of years in Dunlap, and I thought, hey, I like this place. I'm going to stick around. And it's just, it grew on me after a while. I really liked it. I still have a place in Pennsylvania, and I have to drive through some not-so-good smelling farms to get there, eight hours of that. But, so to me, this place is really, I mean, this is a really good place for everybody. Plus, there's, look how many people, I, I drove by this farm several times a week, and I see the different people working there. And there's scads, people working. So, I mean, they don't always stay very long because it's not for everybody. It's tough. Farming's tough. And so, um, they can't cut the mustard, they go away, got to get new ones, and you see just the rotating. But there's always, I don't know, 10 or 15 people. So that's as much as most retail stores. So anyhow, that's all I have to say.
You get your point. Thank you so much. Thank you.
I'm not allowed to say anything else.
No, yes.
My name's on the list.
No, but come up and give me your name.
My name's Thomas Gilmore Ayers III.
Thomas Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, Ayers III. Um, I'm the guy you smell down the road. Uh, I, I'm, uh, the directing manager of Big Sky Ranch Holdings LLC, AKA Nova's Ark Project. We also got our conditional cultivator's license. We're located down the road by Scuttle Hole. Um, so we're the ones you smell over there.
What are we smelling?
Uh, marijuana. Uh, we, we're doing recreational marijuana. We are also.
Where are you located?
Exactly, right on the corner of Millstone and Scuttle Hole Road.
No, Nova's, you know Nova's, uh, where they have the sheep grazing up there?
I'm talking about Scuttle Hole and Butter. That's where I smell.
All right, right up the road from us.
Yeah, but I think it came from today.
Okay. Um, the growing season of marijuana plant, it is only four months that the marijuana plant smells before it's harvested and brought inside. The, when a plant is in its infancy, it doesn't have that smell until it starts developing the flower. Then we got a pungent smell, um, and it's only three or four months before harvest and taken away. So the rest of the year, uh, as far along as this processing goes and smells from processing and moves inside, uh, there's carbon filters that are involved in all this processing. So air that's coming out of the facility will be filtered through. There won't be any smell. So.
Okay, well, that's an education.
Yeah. We are also doing organic regenerative farming, no chemicals at all. Uh, we're doing farming like our great-great-grandparents used to do with, uh, no-till. Uh, it's, and it's working. Uh, brought in worms. It's amazing. No chemicals. It, it, the cost that they tell you about doing organics is not true, that it's more expensive to do. Uh, I got a quote for our nutrients for about 25 grand. I spent with our regenerative farming practices, we've spent under a thousand dollars for fertilizers. And just, we're feeding bugs. That's what we're doing. Essentially, we're feeding bugs, and so.
Okay.
That's, that's my piece.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Did, Dave, do, do you want to address anything about the odors? Are you going to be putting any charcoal filters to take the skunk away?
Yeah, and I, I just wanted to bring up, maybe just a couple of clarifications. Uh, you know, with, with the photovoltaics, uh, I'm on a demand meter. Uh, most residencies don't understand this, but basically I turn on all the lights in the house for 15 minutes in the barn. This meter ratchets up and stays there for the rest of the month because the municipality has to have that money on demand at all times. Um, we're also trying to meet mandates and initiatives put forward by the state, just like Tesla here, for renewable energies, and also for resilience on farms. You brought up, yes, there will be battery packs. Um, in the state of a hurricane, uh, people come to farms, and it's important for us to have our walk-in coolers running and our production capabilities to pack food, provide safe, uh, workspaces for our employees, et cetera. As to the odor, uh, as Tom here shared, there are multiple cultivation sites throughout the town. Uh, this was a little enlightening. I saw some eyebrows go up. Let us know that the property directly to the west, uh, and, and just adjacent to Mr. Addison's property, uh, they too are licensed for hemp and actually grew acreage much more than I have in the past. Um, so there are, we can't necessarily point fingers in one direction. Well, what we can do is acknowledge an industry, and together as a community, a board, and neighbors, figure out ways to, to cohabitate. Um, I will say, when it comes to cultivation odors, this is really about cultivation, not processing odors. Once it's dry and brought inside, you don't have two acres of these plants fluorescing outdoors. You know, this is all now captured. So this, this really isn't a concern of like filtration in these facilities. That's really more of a concern in some of the cultivation facilities. That being said, um, you know, in the future, you know, the town might want to consider how, uh, which will happen, I'm not saying myself, but other entities. Uh, we all see what's happening with the Office of Cannabis Management, uh, and there's, you know, there's a big rush right now on how, uh, maybe they, they look at, um, these, the way we handle, uh, odors and other mitigating things. And there are solutions that are out there, and those, those will be coming down the road. But, you know, just to be able to have the opportunities, continue to be a farmer, provide for my family, my employees and my community, uh, even in these early days, that may be a little awkward. Uh, there are long-term goals to meet energy sustainability, uh, to become an even better neighbor than we've already been said to be. Uh, and to the point of the schools, uh, I have a degree in early childhood education. I'm a pretty cool dad, my eight-year-old says. Uh, I also give many tours annually to homeschool groups throughout the region, schools down the street, across the street, and across town. The number one thing they may be concerned about hemp, cannabis, marijuana, all these things, is that are they still going to be able to tour the farms? It's not because they're scared of this, so let's not just be about, um, our conceptions of a crop, and let's really keep it to the facts of the matter, how community members, agronomists, and all of us were looking for solutions to, can you, to move forward and be viable.
Great, thank you.
Can you just share the, um, the three-to-four-month window of when the crop is harvested?
Yeah, usually, uh, so the plants in a vegetative state, uh, usually start to switch into their flowering state, thank High Times Magazine, uh, in late August. Uh, it's really at that time where. And it's really at that time where some of the larger odors begin to emanate, until around this time in October, when harvest has ceased. There may be some minor remnants of things you're driving, greenhouses. But again, once it's all brought in, it's bagged. It's in enclosed facilities, worked within substantially smaller amounts. You know, we're not talking about one acre here. We're talking about a bag this big being opened inside in the facility, akin to somebody having some bad munching stomach problems.
About three months?
Three, four, August, September, October, yeah. And again, there are multiple cultivation sites throughout Long Island and New York. So, you know, to say it's one specific, I think it really behooves us all to move forward, you know, with some policy along with the state, so we can address these issues without it being restrictive. Because there's good actors and there's bad actors, and it's already been shared tonight that we're a good actor. And I'm just asking for the opportunity, like you've been working with me so far, that I can continue to be viable. And I didn't bring the camera crew this time. The documentary is done.
Thanks for educating us. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anytime.
Is hemp a deer-resistant crop?
It is not. They enjoy it. Unfortunately, unfortunately, we even see deer now pulling potatoes out of unprotected fields. My garlic in unprotected fields has been trampled. I really am sad to say that open acreage, as in no fencing, agricultural fencing, really is not an option for farmers these days, just our lack of biological corridors and habitat and management of the herds.
So what do you do to protect your crop from deer and insects?
You know, we put in for permits, and you know, we were worried, we put in deer fencing. And I've seen deer jump through a hole, one foot square in a fence. I've also seen them jump over a foot fence with enough of a runway. But, and the fencing also adds to security plans.
Yeah.
Sure. Okay. Anybody else from the audience want to speak? You have to come up to the podium, Tom, because of the audio equipment, so please.
Dave, can you just go into a little bit more detail?
Wait till you're in front of them. We have to record this, the audio.
So, I just wanted to, can you go into a little bit more detail of exactly what's going to go inside the barn, the processes? Any machinery, equipment, noise factors, things like that?
Come to the mic then, Dave.
I can share. You're not going to hear any more than you hear right now, except for maybe a heat pump or an evaporator. Is it an evaporator or a condenser? I forgot the part that's outside on the side yard. What is that exactly? For air conditioning, you know, for heating and cooling, for the comfort of our clients. Is that on the concrete equipment?
Sir, you can't, we can't have a back and forth from the audience. You have to-
Sure, so on the south side of the barn, the side yard, customary to residential properties, et cetera, you know, we need to place HVAC equipment. This will all be customary in scale and size to a structure of this size that we're actually surrounded by in the area. And again, we're installing the photovoltaics to reduce that energy consumption and to meet the initiatives and mandates of the state. Matter of fact, we're applying for some grant programs. We're also working with Recharge, which is like a renewable energy sourced program. You get in, we can get hydroelectric produce stuff. So we're really trying to meet, you know, these energy initiatives. As I explained, there's going to be tincturing, oil infusion, pressing. Actually, one of the major extractions we want to use is actually water these days, where you can wash the resins off. And all of these things, you know, this is not a welding shop with a big outdoor rig, trucks backing up all day. As was shared by somebody else here, we're actually reducing the outstructures. We're making this more aesthetically pleasing from curb appeal, and we're looking to aggregate our use under one roof. Let it be known, I'm usually very private with these things, but there's been an intergenerational exchange of this property. And so this is now my time to reorganize this into a viable and streamlined entity, where I've been scrambling between regulations and family. I don't know which one's worse. But at this point, it's my goal to simplify this. I think I've already said this before, to a streamlined, under-one-roof operation. And also keep in mind, in the back of the building, there's about a back one-third that's broke up into two chunks. That's still supporting, you know, our straight ag stuff. You know, so I mean, there is a complete balance here, of production. You know, we're not abandoning agricultural use, you know, we're just growing crops, and we're bringing them in this space in a form into which they can be brought to market. And without that use, there is no viability in my farm.
So, can you say that the processing equipment is not going to generate noise outside the barn? And is it, I think his concern is mechanical, industrial-type equipment?
I would imagine, I mean, we're going to spray foam this building with inches of spray foam, you know, to create an envelope. I would imagine the heat pumps would, at that point, make more noise than something else. Maybe for OSHA standards, there may be some reason to vent something, in case of some emergency. I have no idea. But it's not like I'm expecting things to be running on the external walls and venting daily. You know, this is, everything's meant to operate inside of a climate-controlled structure.
So the heat pumps are inside?
Well, think in your home, or traditional design of a home, we have a house, an insulated structure. We have an air handler that forces cool air in the house, but outside, there's usually a unit. Yay large. And depending on the size of the house and the calculated loads, you know, you need to have a couple of those, and depending on the zones. In the case, sometimes there are mini splits that are used, where some of these are smaller. But again, it's not my intention to line the whole side yard with all this mechanical. I want everything inside. I too want an aesthetically pleasing operation that makes peace, you know, with my neighborhood.
It's, I mean, it's an industry that's still in its infancy, right? So you have an opportunity here to be a standard bearer, in a sense, on the east end. Not only, you know, doing responsible farming, but also doing it in a very neighborly fashion. So I appreciate the fact that you're so open to all of these things. And I fully understand your neighbor's concern, how, you know, they may be a little bit freaked out. So, you know, if you can continue to dialogue and educate, I think you'd not only be doing a service to yourself, but other farmers like you.
I'm continually doing that, you know. I've been working vicariously with the Department of Labor through Body Cannon and their efforts over there at Development Center. We're very much looking for ways to incubate jobs, create generational wealth, to give people good-paying jobs that can afford them to stay maybe in their legacy homes, or dare I say, possibly purchase one. So I am very much entrenched in educating my community. I think I've watched a meeting or two. I've even been referenced at Southampton Town in Riverhead. I am very much capable of switching hats, if you need me to be absolutely objective, and help get your resources, so you understand the same guidance that I'm working off of. But I'll say this, switching the hat back to Farmer Day, the third-generation farmer, my daughter's a fourth, that, you know, what I'm proposing really is modern, really is energy-efficient, and really is one of the best situated projects for where we are, you know, moving forward. We have big plans also, just rest in peace. The new eight acres I have to the north, really, where we're looking to bring in, you know, edible forestry, and, you know, some more permanent stuff, where we want to reduce the amount of tillage. Where we're looking to implement regenerative agriculture. But just note, this time, this is the rock that's paying for my bills, and without that, that future is not possible.
There have been issues with, for example, roasting coffee and the odor problems associated with that. Are you cooking this? Are you roasting this?
No. There should really be no associated smells of that level. I mean, I am familiar with a couple coffee roasters, I mean, in gross, they're filling the whole neighborhood with this. And I would imagine, at any time, should we deem some sort of process that needed some sort of remediation? There are very simple carbon filters that can alleviate venting. Really, just the largest noxious event occurs with the cultivation of outdoor cannabis, which-
It's the outdoor growing?
Is outdoor. There are ways to put it indoors. There are very, that's not going to remediate it. Really, you need sealed structures that are sealed, because as soon as you vent, it's like a coffee roaster. They're roasting, and you're going to burp this gas. There are long-term solutions. I'm actively working on them. You know, I do sit as the former Long Island Committee Chairman for the New York Cannabis Growers Process Association. We rebranded as Canny. I am now the policy co-chair. I also sit on their Manufacturing and Processing Committee. I also sit on the Cannabis and Hemp Work Group for New York State Farm Bureau. So I'm very much at the core of many of these conversations, and I'm bringing many of these modern and current resolutions to table today.
Great. Very interesting. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone in Zoom?
Yeah, there is.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, hi. My name is Eric Frye, the owner of 594 Butter Lane. Been the owner of that property for 16 years. The first I heard about this project was kind of clock this morning, so I apologize that I can't be there in person. I did not receive the email at my home in Butter Lane. I can tell you, though, that when I'm in Butter Lane, the stench from the Open Organics Farm and the hemp that's grown there is extremely strong. I have two questions tonight. First, I'm just curious why the public hearing for Phase One was waived? And second, reiterating one of the points that an earlier panel's made, we need more information here. I mean, how much more hemp is going to be processed than is being processed today by Open-minded organics? The size of the barn, at least from what I could ferret out from the earlier discussions, is materially bigger than the, what's called the, this portable structure where it's being done today. It sounds like it's very much larger. So does that mean that, you know, the volume of hemp that's going to be grown is going to increase significantly? So I think there's many issues that really need to be understood here. And I don't think we have the information or we've been given proper notice. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Carl, you want to-
I think I need to speak on the notice provision.
Yeah.
All notice provisions pursuant to the code were followed. I think your council will agree, so I think it needs to be clarified that proper notice was issued to all required participants, and the property has been posted for the last 10 days.
Good.
Can you also verify, because I was trying to look on here, the office trailer that's currently being used for hemp processing compared to the size of the processing space in the existing barn, which is bigger, what is the difference in size of the processing space? Just so that we can address the comment that was made.
Sure, I don't, maybe Ben would do it.
Because I know the barn is bigger, but the actual processing spaces within that, is it a large difference?
So just to speak generally of the transition from a small space that we are very much shoehorned in.
Sure.
There's a refrigeration unit that is also an accessory storage unit to that processing, and also those three other outbuildings. So when you aggregate all of that together, when you take in the fact we're going to have an employee storage area, a formal bathroom. I spend $700 a month for our headquarters with washing stations. So there are many uses and utilitarian things that are being put under the roof in this structure. And again, the back third, as you can see where it's partitioned, is still our tractor shop and storage.
Equipment, you have equipment, and then you have a warehouse.
This is very much just giving us room. You know, whereas right now, there's a small little panel, and we're going to be putting photovoltaics. They're going to need room to have the batteries and the panels. We're going to be hooking up to municipal water, right, which is a big goal for municipalities as well. And these things take space, so sure, there's an increase in capacity, but really, it's really all relative to a lot of the things that we're now, I'm cleaning up. Now that I have the property, I can put this all under one roof and make it more streamlined, aesthetic, and pleasing to the community at large.
Yeah, and I guess, I mean, the intention of my question is to, obviously, it's a charged issue, and this particular comment comes down to math, right?
Sure.
What is, what is the difference in the square footage of the processing space?
Looks like 50% of this new barn building will be for processing. The other 50 is storage and farmhouse and farm equipment. So it's the 50%. Does that equal what you've got?
Yeah, and, no, this is an existing building. You know, the only addition really is an overhang out front, so people don't have to wait out in the rain to access the building. And the storage side, like, we're already using that length of the barn for storage. It's just not insulated and climate-controlled. So when you take 500 square feet, 20 by 8, you're probably just over 1,000 square feet of what is that office trailer. Then we've got the reefer units, another several hundred. All right, so we've got a pen and paper, so 8 by 40, 320?
Yep.
21 by 8?
21 by 8?
168.
168.
The 500?
You do it.
20 by 8, you've got another 160.
Yeah.
The bathroom outside, that's 8 by 8. You know, the employee rest area is under trees outside. It's a couple hundred square feet right there. It's literally wooden picnic tables, you know, I mean, their storage is literally just that.
What's the size of this processing area here?
Do we have a floor plan?
Yeah.
So that's about 700 square feet, everything that you talked about.
Right. Well, no, 320, 168, so 160.
320, 168, 160, 160.
We don't have dimensions. So each one of those posts is seven and a half feet. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 6 times 7 and a half?
45.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, times 7 and a half? And so that's the space of this processing area in, you know.
Might I suggest another way to look at this? How many acres are you now cultivating with hemp? And how many do you plan to cultivate after you have this new barn?
I plan to continue to cultivate about what we have historically in the past. And as I had stated earlier here, you know, it is my goal, as this industry rolls out, myself or other people who'll come before you are going to seek applications, or just use to bring these indoor. But we have to get to that point, so we can actually find the resolve to many of these issues that are being brought forth today. These are all excellent points, and we're all working towards resolve on that. But we need to have the good players at the table who are willing to keep open dialogues and do the work.
Do you have mature plants growing right now? You have been harvested?
Actually, as of the other day, every last plant has been harvested out of the ground. Now, again, I cannot speak for other cultivators in the area, whether they are hemp or adult-use marijuana. You know, again, we've got massive greenhouse on the other side, fields over there. Heck, they grew considerably more hemp last year than I did. So, you know, this is a larger thing than just this one project. We're bringing up great issues, and I'm starting to bring some resolution to table.
The fact that you're on the council is-
We discuss these things day in and day out. We're very much aware of them. But without bringing resolve, we're not going to be able to move it forward. And if we don't have viability amongst farmers, the programs are no good.
Good. You should share whatever, share your information with us.
When you grow marijuana inside, it's incredibly electricity-intensive, because you need special grow lights. And we have challenges with our electric out here. So it's a balance.
So that's actually a misnomer. There is a reality that indoor cultivation produces high-quality cannabis flower, reduces the need for inputs, pesticides, because you can control the environment. But what I had alluded to, which is in the future, you know, as the farmers get a foothold, the industry rolls out, there are literally next-generation structures that use mixed light and actually can, with proper design. These systems exist, and it's on the books in the future. We'll see what happens. Where they use 20% of the current use, where through proper passive solar design, reflective materials, geothermal, the nature of the glazing, you actually get more natural sunlight into these grow chambers than you would if it was a traditional greenhouse. So there's very much a bright future on the horizon that will remediate many of the concerns that have been brought up today. We just have to take one step in front of the other to get to that solution. Because that too is going to take time. to get to that solution, because that, too, is going to take time and money. But I can assure you, there, there are very smart, motivated people who are very aware of these issues, and we're actively working on it.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any more people in the Zoom room?
Yeah, one more.
Sorry, it's Eric Frye, just, just to follow up, I was just curious. So if the volume of the crop is not going to increase, what is the need for having eight parking spots for employees? I just, I'm just not clear as to, I, I just, it seems like the size of the processing, again, you guys lost me in the numbers, and this is why we need to have more time to understand what's happening here, Tom's earlier point. But I don't know if you, if you're not going to increase the volume, I'm not sure why we need more, eight more parking spots. But again, we don't need to answer this tonight. I think what we need to do is really research this and understand what's happening here. Again, I didn't, no one answered my first question, which is the public hearing for Phase One was waived. Okay.
Carl?
The parking is just being formalized. We're not adding any additional parking. We're just showing them, because this is the first site plan it's had.
So right now, the employees just haphazardly just park?
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. They're, they're actually probably parking where-
So you're not expecting to have eight more employees than you have now, or some, any more employees than you have now?
I'm expecting to mean-
Where do they park now?
My client will answer. And you raise a good point, right? At first glance, I would see this. We're formalizing the parking. We went off of calculations based on having a farm stand and a, an agricultural operation. So these are just formalizing, trust me, I'm quite content to not formalize them, but it's part of the planning process. No, I'm not necessarily expecting more employees, but actually, what I'm hoping to do is carry my employees year-round. I, I know your jobs up here, whether on a paid or volunteer basis, are very difficult, but I, I don't know if you could imagine literally having to hire and retrain people every six months. And it's one of my goals, to add stability to my organization. And as to the space, we're literally busting at the seams. I'm literally taking things in and out of storage and moving and shuffling. It's, it's literally, even though you see a physical space, and you're like, well, why do you need more? I mean, literally, sometimes you just need more wiggle room, because you're, you're so short of a space to, to safely and efficiently operate.
While you're up there, Dave, could you just describe what you, what was accomplished in Phase One and the time constraint you had on that?
Yeah, so what it basically, licenses were expiring, and license applications were opening in the state, and we needed to make sure that the local municipality was aware as what was going on, and that we were in the process of all of these things.
So what'd you do in Phase One?
Phase One was really the authorization saying a temporary use of this trailer until we make it in Phase Two, when we complete this project, and removing what was a contentious trailer, which was our food truck, which never even opened this year. So that is off of the property at the moment, and it's for sale.
So it was just temporary use of the trailers, so you could secure your license, and now you're in Phase Two, you want to get everything into the barn?
Correct. I want to make it all look nice and neat, just like my, your daughter's room when I dream at night.
And you removed one trailer as part of Phase One?
Yeah, because that one, again, that was a use that was ceased last September. I was just like, hey, let's remove that, so it's not, doesn't need to become a subject of debate. The other three structures, like I said, those are very, those are storage structures that, you know, facilitate the, the work in, in the trailer. And so that's how all of those can go. Once we have a clean, climate-controlled space, we have more room to be, like, more organized, that, that stuff can go away.
Okay. Carl?
Yeah, I, I do also note, with respect to waiving the hearing, that was the request of the applicant that this board considered on the representation that it was going to be temporary. And this hearing is for the permanent and ongoing use.
Great. Okay. Harry, no, I think we're going to have to close. We have lots of other applications. Mr. Addison, thank you.
You can do a third.
We're going to have a, I'm going to close this with a 30-day written comment period, so you've got 30 days, and you can speak to Dave as well. So motion to close with a 30-day by Craig, second by Kate, all in favor. Closed extensions, six in favor, one absent. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. So we have-
Outside, you've got to go outside. Come on.
Coastal, Coastal Vision. Are we taking these together, Anthony?
Yeah, both of them. And Brian's got the board.
Yeah, yeah.
They know where the fire museum is.
So do we have notice, counsel?
We do, Madam Chair.
We do. Who's reading Coastal?
Coastal Vision One.
You are, Tom. Okay, Tom. And then read one after the other.
Please take notice that in accordance with Local Law Number 417 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, October 13, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the pre-application entitled Coastal Vision One LLC. The application proposes a standard subdivision parentheses yield plan with a total of seven lots, preliminary plan with a yield of six lots, and a park area, a density incentive standard plan with eight lots, a reduced density cluster plan with six lots, and open space representing 25% of the area of the lot. And a density incentive cluster plan with eight lots and open space representing 25% of the area of the lot on a vacant parcel totaling 3.81 acres, including areas of proposed road abandonments within the R20 zoning district on the north side of Old Country Road and south of the Long Island Railroad tracks located at 48 Old Country Road, East Quogue, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-289-2-10.
So that's Coastal Vision One?
That's Coastal Vision One.
Okay. You can, can you read Coastal Vision Two?
Sure. Please take notice that in accordance with Local Law Number 417 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, October 13, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the pre-application entitled Coastal Vision Two LLC. The application proposes a standard subdivision yield plan with a total of 11 lots, a reduced density preliminary plan with 10 lots, and a park area, a density incentive standard plan with 12 lots, a reduced density cluster plan with 10 lots, and open space representing 25% area of the area of the lot, and a density incentive cluster plan with 12 lots and open space representing 25% of the area of the lot on a vacant parcel totaling 6.53 acres, including areas of proposed road abandonments within the R20 zoning district on the north side of Old Country Road and south of the LIRR tracks located at 38 Old Country Road, East Quogue, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-289-2-11.
Thank you, Tom.
Randall Whitebrooke for the applicant, 144 West Main Street, B. Shore. The call of the, of the meeting for both of these is accurate. It really isn't much more than I can add to them. These maps, Anthony and I have worked on for probably about eight or nine months, just making sure that they conform to the town code, take advantage of every town code provision, and meet the standards. We're really here looking just really as an as-of right and direction from the board, which map you would prefer. If you would like us to pursue an increased-density map, we would, if the town board or this board would be willing to add a parcel for a development right. It's not something we're looking to do. We don't really want to go through that process with a board of review with the Health Department. I think the preferred map for the applicant is the reduced density with the open space, and I think you'll probably find that to be the better one of the, of the five on each of these. But again, it really opens up for your comment and the public's, you know, comment and feedback.
What is the number of-
May I ask, are these properties contiguous to each other?
They are.
What are the number of lots that-
Is there a reason why we're looking at them separately?
I can answer that question. Because it's a pre-application, ultimately, you will look at one subdivision, a final subdivision that will include, you know, everything. But the town code allows for yield to be established on the properties separately. So we normally then bring the application in for the two properties, and part of my review will include looking at the totality of this as, as one subdivision ultimately. So it's really just for the purposes of establishing yield at the pre-application stage.
Okay.
What is the number of lots that triggers the workforce housing?
So the number of lots is five. Once you, once you're at five, then you have to provide a density incentive. So with this, I'll just, just to help out a little bit, because I sat with, with Randy many times, I made, in other words, with the yields, for example, I said, show me a yield for each property. And then show a second map, basically with the park area. Because if, if you do require an onsite park for this subdivision, then it comes out of the yield. If you don't, in other words, if they pay in lieu of, then they could eliminate the park and use that yield. So I don't know that we would do a park here, but, you know, we'll, we'll do all that. And then I made them give some alternative plans. Show me a plan with a, a standard plan and a cluster in both scenarios, with, without the density incentive and with the density incentive.
So all of the application, yeah, variations?
Yeah. And, and really, just so I could make sure we had the, the maps, this is just going to require, like, a, an analysis and, but that's, that's, that's why we did it this way, so we could, you know, look at two properties and, and I'll, you know, figure out the yield.
But they're, they're required to do density incentive. You seem to, Randy, you seem to suggest it's an option, but it's not an option.
No, but I think-
We provided the map as a requirement, yeah, but we're not pushing that particular map.
You don't have a choice.
Well, no. What he's saying is, the applicant will still do, in other words, if this yield for this property is seven lots, I mean, so let's say we establish a yield of seven lots, we would typically have to say, you get eight, in order, and, and free, you know, and so they could do the affordable. What I think you were saying was that they'll still do their affordable requirement. In other words, provide the 10%, but without the density incentive.
Right. That's what I mean. I'm sorry. Right. We're not looking to add the other lot, so we can make it affordable.
So using the current configuration?
Just taking one of those lots out of your yield. No, no, this will be reconfigured.
Well, yeah, well, that as the example.
Yeah.
You wouldn't reduce, reduce the size of each lot to get the extra density in there? Is that what you're saying?
No, because you, the, it's automatic, so they don't have to show a yield map that shows the extra, in other words, their yield map says seven, and then we say, okay, that's accurate. The law requires that we give you 10%, so we say you get eight lots. They don't have to, they don't have to show one on the yield map, but their subdivision map that they ultimately move forward with would have to show the eight lots and with the affordable. What, like I said, with the discussion I have with the applicant, I think that some of the concerns with doing the density bonus relies on Health Department issues and flow and that sort of thing. So then the question becomes, is it worth transferring in and doing this for, you know, affordable?
Plus, all the result, remaining lots become smaller.
They do. And I don't know that the community would lend us support for that, too. So we're not, you know, East Quogue has had its fair share of battles, so I think.
But you can see the two lots of, the two immediately adjacent to the Mobile Home Park. One's in red, and the other one is not.
And it's next to the town, too. It's another town parcel, behind it?
Yeah, right, right next to it, right? Oh, behind it. No, right next to it. I have to remember, actually.
Yeah, right, to the, to the, to the east.
To the east, and what's to the south, then, that big?
That was also owned by the applicant, but it was just purchased by Discovery Land Company.
Oh.
We have a subdivision application for that piece.
What's it called?
Runs along East Side Avenue, right?
Something East Quogue. I can't remember. It's expired.
Across from 711, runs East, East End Avenue.
Because I think that's a farm, like a farm stand on the property.
Where's this relation to that large workforce housing application that's before the town?
We are.
That's fine.
No, that's E, that's right. Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, different location.
So can they pay into a fund if they don't want to build the affordable housing?
That's an option. I don't think the applicant's saying they won't do it. And I'm, and I'm going to, by the way, I'm not going to, the analysis will include what they're allowed under the law. If the law says they're allowed eight, we're going to, you know, I don't want them to just throw out, you know, especially, you know, when you start number crunching nowadays of what it costs per square foot of the hill. But, you know, I'm going to provide all the options for this. And then I'll dabble around with some design myself. This also includes road abandonments, by the way. On, on, you'll see some, some paper roads that, that are included.
Are you keeping the ownership separate? Or are you merging them?
They will merge ultimately.
Yeah, because, again, the town code specifically talks about the clustering, cluster subdivisions with parcels that are not necessarily even adjacent to each other. And you can actually, you know, do that. I'm looking at one right now, but this, it just happened to be next to each other. So ultimately, it'll be a single lot, you know, we'll cluster and do the open space. Obviously, we'll go through the SEACRA, you know, requirements for this.
Any other, any questions from the board? Is there anyone in Zoom?
No one on Zoom.
No one on Zoom. Okay, so-
Separate resolutions.
Separate resolutions for each, Anthony?
Yeah.
So let's close, close the Coastal Vision Number One with a 10-day written comment period. Motion by Craig, second by Kate, all in favor. Closed extensions, six in favor, one absent. Coastal Vision Two, closed with a 10-day written comment period. Motion by Dennis, second by Tom, all in favor. Closed extensions, six in favor, one absent. Thank you.
Good evening.
Thanks, everybody. Stay well.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Craig, second by Dennis, all in favor. Closed extension, six in favor. We are adjourned. Remember, the 20th, by Zoom, you'll be getting a Zoom link?